I'm mainly here for the uh to see where we stand on the can begin here. Anyway, for the traffic, uh downtown traffic study to help ease the burden on Court Avenue whenever we get that new bridge built. Uh where I think you're all talking about going up and turning right there at the uh Gomart Third Street. And uh anyway, uh what I'm, what we're looking at is uh trying to keep a heavy burden off of court because court's already getting hammered anyway. Certain times of the day, there's cars coming this way, this way, backing up, can't get around. And if you throw all that traffic that's coming across the, what is it? The second street, not second street, but anyway, coming across the bridge right there. If you throw all that down on the, the people's not going to go up and have to go all the way around the old G C Murphy and come back down, they're just going to shoot across and come straight up court. And that's going to just triple, quadruple the burden on that road, which is already hammered now. So I'm just kinda here to follow up and see where we stand on the traffic study. That's all I got.
Go ahead Nate.
But we're referring to the new bridges being built in Hellville, right? Yeah, and so I think the, my understanding, the, the, the bridge project predates me that there was a rumor or an intention to close the Fourth Street Bridge once that bridge in Hellville is open. I don't think there's any, from what, there's no, no agreement or anything like that, that's requiring us to do that, to do this when, when the bridge opens up. And so I think my intention and I think the council's intention, as we discussed, is to leave that bridge open for the foreseeable future. Now, on the agenda tonight, we do have a request to Department of Highways to, to perform a traffic study. When we'd spoke to Department of Highways, they hadn't performed a traffic study before the bridge got moved to that location on the effects of how that traffic would be affected in, in town. So I think tonight, we're, we're hoping to, we're going over a draft letter that we're going to send to Department of Highways to initiate that study hopefully. And that's going to be the first step in a process where we're going to try to see not only that, that traffic pattern change, but perhaps even two, two-way traffic on, on Main Street and see if we can get the best traffic flow possible in Weston.
Well, thanks for coming to discuss that and please feel free to stop by the city building for regular updates on, on a response from D O H.
Just not to be regular.
Once a week will be good.
Thanks, Mr. Dog.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we're really excited to have so many in the audience this evening. Um, as we pay homage and tribute uh to an excellent performing volleyball team. I have a proclamation here. I'll read it and then I'll ask council to entertain a motion to approve the proclamation. Whereas the City of Weston supports local sports teams and team accomplishments. And whereas the Robert L. Bland Middle School volleyball team ended an undefeated season. And whereas the Robert L. Bland Middle School volleyball team is to be commended for outstanding sportsmanship and teamwork. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City of Weston does hereby commemorate the Patriots for their exceptional dedication and representation of the Robert L. Bland Middle School. I'll have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Yeah, go ahead, Sherry.
I just want to say that I appreciate each and every one of you. Your hard work and I'm very proud of you. Thank you for representing Lewis County so well.
Now, if we could get a picture somehow.
We can do it.
He's in the back. Think you're gonna be able to get everybody?
Yeah.
We need to scrunch in.
Have someone on this side of Herb and some on this side of Stephen.
And then scrunch in.
Are we all in?
There we go.
Okay, give them a one, two, three, so they can smile.
Ready? Smile. If you guys can scoot in so I can get all of you, you guys like each other. Sometimes. Okay, that's a good one. Right there, I got everyone, everyone smile. Thank you guys. Well, we did pretty good in St. Augustine. I don't think we went overboard.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's gonna be a long night, isn't it?
It could be.
Sherry, she talks more than ten seconds on anything. I'm throwing this down. You hear that? How you doing? Do you?
Hey, let me take some, it's gonna be a couple of years.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Freddie Potter, who's come to talk about the Lewis County High School Transport Cart Fund. Thanks for coming, Freddie.
Very much. That's right. If I'd have stood out in the hallway, they, they wouldn't have come in. Yeah. As mentioned, my name is Freddie Potter. I'm a graduate of Lewis County High School, class of nineteen seventy-three, nineteen seventy-three. Okay, so it's been fifty years since I graduated from here. Now, it's my understanding that you all have a packet like this, a three little page brochure that I prepared uh for you here today. Back in mid-July, I started a fundraising campaign for the benefit of Lewis County High School. Now, if you all have been to a football game, a soccer game, or band event, or anything that happens up at Lewis County High School, you are aware that they use a couple of golf carts to transport senior citizens and veterans and people that have a hard time walking, or if there's an empty seat in a cart, you get a free ride up the hill. Otherwise, people my age have a hard time walking up that hill, okay? So what they have is a couple of old golf carts that they got from Harrisonburg, Virginia about fifteen years ago. They have worn out and I want to replace. Okay? Now, I have a couple of pictures. These photos here were prepared by J and M Graphics up here in Bendale. All right? I do not want to get a standard golf cart for these people. I want something that's better, newer, that's designed to climb a hill, something's got a better engine, it's got a better transmission, better suspension, things of this nature, something that will outlive me, okay? Which may not take much, but anyway, I would like for them to have something new that's going to last for quite some time. Now, Mr. Curtis here is familiar with our project, as is Mrs. Edwards, as is Mr. Stansberry and Mr. Sterrett and several other people. All right? So, I'm asking for some financial assistance. And if you've got it, I'm holding my fingers crossed here, within your budget to provide us with a thousand dollar contribution, I would love that. And it would go a long way. And thanks to Mr. Curtis here. He is one of our contributors to our program. Okay? Nate here, back when he was a young man, played soccer at Lewis County High School, and he got to see this activity at every game that he went to for four years. All right.
That calls for a personal donation.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I talked to him first, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We have mailed out roughly two hundred letters to various alumni people, most of from the class of nineteen seventy-three. And Mickey Matt's left. Mickey got a letter from us a long time ago, okay? So where we're, where we're at on our contribution fund, I brought the home, it's a chart as well, that was also prepared by J and M Graphics. It says here, we've got just a little over twelve thousand dollars. That's been up considerably. We're up to about sixteen thousand now, from what I understand. And it says here, our top out is nineteen thousand. It's going to take us a little more than that. The prices change on these golf carts, transport carts by the week, okay? Uh suppliers change. And uh I was supposed to have been in town at three thirty today and I was on the phone with a company that manufactures exactly what I'm looking for. And they're in Missouri, American-made product, okay? So that's where we're at with that. And uh thanks to the help of, this letter was prepared by Lewis County First. Okay, and thanks to their help and being a nonprofit organization, that has really helped us out a lot. It's been a great benefit to me because it is a great organization to work with. And uh so if you guys got it within your budget from the city, that would be fantastic. And if you don't, I totally understand. Now, since you all have a packet, okay? You have no excuse to ignore this personally, okay? So if you've got fifty bucks to spare, we will take it from you, okay? And that has been the, that has been the heart and soul of this campaign, i- is the businesses like Mr. Curtis over here and individuals that have donated to this. And we've had responses from California, New Jersey, people that have moved away. Okay, have really helped us out a lot. And I get good news every day from our treasurer, Mr. Edwards back here, okay? He comes dressed better than I do. But uh Lewis County First has been an outstanding organization to work with. And so everyone here, if you can help us out individually and if the city can help us out too, greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Potter, you discussed that if, if an organization gave a donation, I think they're going to get a decal or some sort on the golf cart perhaps. Is there uh, if there's individual contributions, are they going to be on a wall somewhere or something that, of that nature?
We can make that happen.
Okay.
Yes, we will probably. Talk to uh Johnny White and have him to put us something like this up with everybody's name on it. It might take a while to get that.
Sure, sure.
I will do that.
Yeah.
Not a problem. Yes. Mr. Curtis's company, the, what's it called, the Greasy Spot?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, the Oil Spot. Their names are going to be prominently placed.
On the front.
On the front, yes. Front and the back and, I mean. Yes. Yes, indeed. We can do that. We can make that happen. Yes. And I'll be more than glad to do that. Yeah.
Okay, let's talk money.
Uh typically, if anything like this would come out of the city council's funds, I don't know that, that total right now, but I think a thousand dollars is, by my memory, is essentially what you've had for the year. And I think we've probably made a few contributions to different things.
You're incidentally, you're coming mid-budget.
I'm probably. At the bottom of the list.
No, you're not. You, you are very important to us. And, and as is Lewis County Board of Education, the school system, our educational system, very important, high priorities. However, we do work on a fiscal budget in your mid-year. So, yes, which means some of the money may be there in some slots and some of the money may not. We may have to wait to give you that donation that you want till our next fiscal year is what we're saying. But that's why I'm asking direction from Nate, our city manager, to clarify for us.
Okay, I, I think if you guys want to approve a donation, whatever number that is, we've got some contingency funds we could pull from that and just revise our budget in the future. Doesn't sound like they need to check tomorrow or anything like that. So that would give us a little bit of time on our next budget revision. We could just include that amount change in your guys' city council, council funds and we'll make sure that everything balances and kosher.
There's room on the calendar for us to wait, okay?
Okay.
We're, we're probably going to carry our contributions well into January. I, I would like to wrap it up by then, but maybe not. I mean, there's not another ballgame till next October, August, August, so you know, we don't need a new cart right away. Let me tell you something. If you can come up with a thousand dollars, I will find Spotty to match it. I guarantee that.
Ready? I'll move to approve a thousand dollars to the project with the golf courts.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second uh to donate one thousand dollars to the L C H S Transport Cart Fund. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Steve White?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Very good. Boy, you guys are easy. I mean that in all sincerity. Thank you as well.
Freddie.
Have a knee replacement or anything like that in the near future. And you'll be able to walk up the hill for a few more years to come. But if not, John Weston will be waiting on you, okay? Bottom of the hill. And I'll tell you, John Weston's been a absolute great guy to work with.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, next in your packet, you have minutes of the regular session and the special session. If you've had time to take a look at those, I'll entertain a motion to accept those as distributed if there are no additions or corrections.
Move to accept.
Second, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have reports of city boards commissions. The cemetery board meets next on January ninth, but may meet sooner. Historic landmarks, next meeting is Thursday, December fourteenth. Planning.
Pardon?
Two openings. And there are two openings on the Historic Landmarks Commission. The planning commission, we're still midway in the updating the comprehensive plan. That next meeting is December the thirteenth at four thirty. Board of Parks and Rec. Uh, next meeting Wednesday, December the sixth. The Lewis County E D A, Wednesday, December thirteenth. Board of Zoning Appeals, December twelfth. Code Appeals, December twenty-first. The Tree Commission, Tuesday, December fifth. And it looks like we have two positions still available on that board. And the Municipal Appeals Board has three positions open. So next we'll move to the Sanitary Board Report.
Good evening. Good evening. I'll have my report in your packet. I'll just go over a couple of things. This past month, we've worked with the City of Weston and with Duke's Root Control to um do some root treatment to some of our lines as kind of an experimental thing that we're doing. And Nate has been working with us on that to treat it with some foam root chemicals and see if that will alleviate some of the stoppages that we've had in some of those lines. We're kind of excited to see how that works out for us. There's several missed utility workouts and we've worked with the bridge people um on moving some lines, the new bridge. Did fourteen jet calls this month. Most of those were um customer laterals. The weather has a lot to do with how many of those we can do. If it's not above freezing, then we don't get out to do as many of those. As far as in the office, um the contract for the audits was approved this past month. And I've been working with the state auditor, or not the state auditor, but the auditor who is doing our audits this year, this past week, and they have begun that process. Also working with Zach on our P S C annual report. He started that process too. Other than that, um, just the general stuff that I always do in the office and all that's in that report. Um, on the finance side, this month, the receivables were up about thirty-six thousand dollars. We took in two hundred and five thousand dollars and your stormwater fees collected were three thousand five hundred seventy-eight. And the two percent utility tax received was a thousand seven hundred and sixty. Checks have been signed for both of those and those will go to Joe and deposited into the stormwater fee fund as well. Anybody have any questions? Herb?
Huh?
Any question?
Are you getting bills paid?
Yep.
All right, it's good enough.
We're getting there.
Questions from anyone else? No? Okay, thank you Dee.
I want to make a quick note on the, on the root stuff, just, just to give you guys a little bit of background. That'll come with a warranty period of two years. So the company will guarantee that that will stay unplugged for two years. And then at that point, we'll have the chance to re-up again with another treatment, I think. And it's a three-year term after that going forward. And so we're hoping that it's just a new, new way of doing things and, and, but hopefully you're hearing from us in a couple of years from now that we're redoing the root stuff and it won't be because of the failure, it's, it'll be because it's to extend the warranty and keep those things clear.
Thank you Dee. Hey, finance report.
Joe moved some money this month.
All right. Um, I've got a couple of action items that I'll ask you to deal with first, and then I have a few things just to tell you a narrative. Um, the first is transfer funds from general fund to vacant structures fund. In one of your smaller packets, under your big packet, there should be um a little paperclip packet that is horizontal, that says vacant structures at the top. And from that report, you see that last month, we received four thousand dollars in vacant structure fee payments. Um, and for that reason, I'm going to ask you to move four thousand dollars from the general fund to the vacant structures fund.
I'll move.
It's been moved in second to move four thousand dollars from the general fund to the vacant structure fund. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then attached to that report um is the A R aging report. Um, you also receive that one by email. Um, that just shows you those ones that are outstanding that haven't been paid. Um, I do have some tangential good news related to that, um, because I know that sometimes those things sit out there and we think, boy, are we ever going to get paid for them. Um, this past month, we had two big lean payoffs um that together totaled about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so that was, it was a really good month for us in lean payoffs. Um, so I know sometimes we, we put those leans on things and we think they're just going to sit there forever. And sometimes they do sit there forever. And sometimes we get fifteen thousand dollar lean payoffs. Um, so last month was a really good month and that was exciting and I wanted to share that with you. Um, do you have any questions about any of the vacant structure stuff before I move on?
I have one quick question. Are you getting any feedback from any of the vacant structures as far as people with any ideas or upcoming plans in the near future?
That's a better question for Marty, to be honest.
Well, a couple of the the uh leans that uh Joe was talking about that we collected, two of those were vacant homes. They've been sitting there for a while. One, one's where the big slip was at Arch and it's been vacant for, what, close to a year now? And the other one's been vacant, I don't know, for several years before I came to work here up, up on uh Twelfth Street. So we are getting some of those. Um, I had a guy contact me Friday also. He wanted a list of some of our vacant homes. He'd like to come and explore them and maybe purchase some of them and get them turned around and, and put it back into use. So we've got a couple of people wanting.
What about on the commercial side?
Commercial's not, not as many people inquiring about those. Most of the, most of the people we talk about are, are on the residential. Nate, Nate's got a lot more information, but um he knows he's in the conversation with somebody on the, on the downtown building that's vacant at the moment. And they want to put, put a bit of money into it if we be able to do work on it.
I've also got an answer.
Just want to be my last question is, if we're working on anything at all, of course, I know everybody's busy, but as far as regarding vacant structure, going, coming up with some type of plan in the, in the near future to offer to these people. You know, new business owners, if they was to come in, investors or whoever it may be, as far as, I know we've spoke with B and O Tax, maybe dissolving and different things of that nature, so.
We, Nate and I've kicked that around a little bit, like with the several level buildings and stuff. He's, he's come up with some pretty good ideas.
Yeah.
Trying to rack her hands on how, how we can get people interested in some.
Yeah, which wasn't requesting any answers, so I just.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'll just remind you, you know, that it's private property at the end of the day, and we really can't dictate necessarily. Somebody uh inhabits it. And I, and I think that that's the struggle. There's almost every one of these commercial properties has some kind of weird story behind it, that's not the same, that's got its own particular flavor of why it's not being occupied. Um, and so, I mean, this, this program is meant to secure them, right? As we know. Um, and so, I mean, this, this program is meant to secure them, right, as we know. And then hopefully encourage them with the ramp up of the fees to, to not sit on their hands and do nothing.
Which is not very, very, um, to wear the, any amount in time. I think that amount will get there.
Yeah, and it's, and I think that the, the vacant structure program, you know, has some caveats to it, right? If you, if you have your utilities on, you're not technically vacant in some, some instances. And so we've had some people with commercial property work around our rules and, and not be vacant, not classified. When we look at it and you sit there and say, everybody on the street would say that's vacant, but it's not technically vacant, vacant. And so that's a struggle and I think that that's, it's difficult with the way the state law is written for us to use that program as our incentive piece uh for those types of properties, but I, you know, we're, we're trying to work through, I've got a couple of calls out to the seven eleven folks. To me, those are the two of the most prominent ones that don't see, we haven't had a conversation with them for a while about what's going on. And so I, right before I left, I got a couple of calls back and so that's on my list to follow up on this week is to try to to get the calculus of what's going on there because uh they've been, we'll, we'll miss them on the vacant structures list because they've been habitual payers. They, they don't miss a payment, but you know, those are two prominent or three prominent locations within our city that really could use some kind of activity. And probably are, are buildings that could be easily rented and at their current status.
And as far as getting business owners and vacant structure owners' attention, that's part of the business, but I think it's more important that we come up with some type of incentive or plans that to get people that, to get them to want to come in.
Yeah.
To start a business instead of just getting their attention for peas and all, so.
But I think that's the struggle. We've had some, you know, the building owners, a lot of them are at a place where they aren't necessarily interested in having somebody in there. And then you've got the people who would like to come in to start a business. They don't have a place to start a business or to, to hold their business because there's not any will, anybody willing to, to rent to them. And so that's, those are two difficult problems that we have and really those two need to meet together in a perfect world, but we can't force it, you know, in a sense. So yeah, I try to, try to have conversations with business people and I, I welcome counsel doing the same thing to, to try to encourage that. You know, and, and part of that conversation is always yeah, tell me what I need to be doing to get you, you know, off the mat and back in the action here.
Oh, right.
You know, and I, I've never really gotten good answers from those folks. Most of them say, I don't, I just don't want to, you know, and that's, to me, that's a shame, honestly, but it's where we're left. And I don't know, I don't know of any kind of magic bullet to convince them otherwise at this point.
Yeah. No, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about vacant structures? Okay. Um, next point of business is budget revisions. There are two in your packet. Um, they're both related to the CDs that we opened last month. Um, so I think the first one that appears in your packet is coal severance fund. Um, it'll say fund two in the top left-hand corner. Um, and it's a budget revision for nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, and basically that amount represents um what the coal severance fund will see in interest from its CD. Um, and then we budget almost everything in coal severance into the sidewalk funds, which is why you see that there. And I'll go ahead and tell you about the other one real quick too. So the next one, I think in the packet is the general fund. Um, budget revision, it's for seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, and it's the same thing. That's the interest that we'll see from the CD that we opened from general fund money. So that interest goes back to the general fund. Um, and then in that fund, we use the contingencies line for uh sort of a placeholder for when we don't necessarily have a place that we want to spend something right now. We're allowed to budget up to ten percent of the budgeting contingencies. Um, so that's, that's where that seventy-eight, seventy-five goes for now is in contingencies. Yeah. So real quick on that, I, I think, so we, we budget a thousand dollars a year for um council to go out uh, or spend on different things that are otherwise unrelated to anything else. And I think we've only spent sixty dollars from there so far this year. Um, so we'll take a little bit of a budget revision before June. Um, but I, I don't think it's going to be very much unless you want more money to give out throughout the rest of the fiscal year.
If we could just have one council person volunteer not to get paid one month, we could, we could cover it.
Yeah.
Does it have to be council?
Mayor's in that line too.
You have any question about the budget revisions?
Yeah, you need a motion for approval.
I do for this.
Do you want those on two different for auditing purposes or within the same?
What do you think, mayor? I guess it doesn't hurt to do them separate.
That's fine.
Hey, I moved to, I moved to the, the nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Coal severance fund?
Hey, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Need to approve the um budget revision, you know, of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, and so then sort of related to those two things, um, somewhere deep down in your packets, under your packets, you have the packet of bank statements and there's a document on top that looks like this. Um, it says consolidated fund balance sheet. Um, we have a lot of financial instruments in play now. Um, so I'm going to start providing this to you every month along with the bank statements. Um, and it shows you um what uh, what financial instruments go with, with which funds so that you can see how much is
Okay.
in each fund. Uh, and so we opened five CDs last month. Um, three of them have regulatory requirements required with that. Um, and you just met two of the requirements for general fund and coal severance. The third that we'll have to do something with is the ARPA fund. Um, it will have about ten thousand dollars in interest and we will have to have that interest designated um for an expenditure by December of twenty twenty-four. So I don't have anything for you yet this month, but I'll work with the city manager um to make sure that we bring you something to get that money um designated by the deadline. Um, and then the other two, which are the vacant structure CD and the um rainy day CD don't have any particular regulatory requirements uh with their income. Um, but on that consolidate, consolidated fund balance sheet, you can follow which CDs go with which, which funds and what their maturity dates are and what their interest rates are. Um. Let's see. And then I just had one other thing that I wanted to address with you tonight. Um just because it was a really great question I got um from a member of council throughout the month. Um, I had mentioned last month that I think at some point I'm going to ask you to move some money to some accounts with United Bank, just because they're the only financial institution in Weston that we don't have any money with right now. And I think that we should be um playing ball with all the banks that are in our community and working with us. Um, and a, a member brought a question, basically said, should we diversify even further because of the um FDIC limit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for um insured deposits? Uh, so like if you look at that consolidated fund, because consolidated fund balance sheet, um, you can see easily that we have well over six hundred thousand dollars in Huntington Bank alone. Um, and so what does that mean? A lot of small businesses and nonprofits and quasi-governmental agencies will use this tactic. Will they're try to use multiple institutions to make sure that all those funds get insured? Um, and so the question was basically, should we be doing that? Should we be diversifying further for that reason? Um, and the short answer is as long as I'm doing my job right, it doesn't matter. Um, because um the state requires that all public funds uh be completely insured. Um, and they require that of both the city and in our communication um with these uh financial institutions, but also they require it of the financial institutions. So that's the importance of when you see on those bank statements and they're titled, Huntington has them titled um public funds economy checking, and it's not titled small business checking, it's not small personal checking, but public funds economy checking. Um, that's their internal queue that they have that fully um insured and they do that. They self-insure through collateralization, which is basically means anything above that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold that we have in any institution. Um, they have to self-insure against their securities or um some other form so that if, if anything happens to that financial institution, um, the citizens of Weston have their public funds secured. Um. And so that's just a whole lot to say, uh the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold for the FDIC is still in play for us. But then every dollar that we have in an institution above that is insured through another mechanism. Um, so it's not as important that we should diversify. Um, but I still think that we should bring United Bank in because they do business in Weston and I think it's great that they do business in Weston and I think we should do business with them for that. Um, so I just wanted to share that with you because I, I got that question about the month and I thought it was a good question. Um. Do you have any questions for me about the financial report?
No.
Okay. Then I'll just ask you to take notes that the check detail is in there too. Um. And uh, so I'll ask you to probably when you approve all finding, when you approve department reports, um. I think please make note of that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, next you have the street department report in your packet. Does anyone have any questions?
The only thing that I've got is um letting y'all know the paving's done as of four o'clock today. We didn't get the two streets off the water. And we did not, but that wasn't on the schedule and we didn't get in front of the middle school, which was on the schedule. But uh, we still have these people till June. So come a little bit warmer, warmer weather, we'll probably go back and get those three pieces. And maybe more if there's more funding there. We did get George done. George has a um a base coat on it and it really looks good. And that's all I had to say about that. Other than I have, I think we discussed here a while back last meeting, Nate and I discussed with you all about this vehicle that I can get off of Rocket uh three hundred motors out of Saltwell. And I got the quote lapse a day and it, and the money is, is in the budget and Nate and I spoke about last month. The vehicle was thirty-three nine and I was going to put a twelve months uh fifteen thousand mile warranty bumper to bumper on it for another twelve hundred dollars. And it's going to make it right around, yeah, we'll just round it up to thirty-five thousand. And this vehicle has forty thousand miles on it, has a snow plow already on it. You did, but I just wanted to get, reach back to you and let you all know where, where, where that I'm at. And still, I just spoke with Nate on that, where I think we're going to move forward.
Hey, questions for Mike?
Comments? I'd like to thank the street department for helping us decorate whole property. Also, I um wanted, needed to relay the message from the folks at Miracle One Main. Thanking you for all of your assistance with that event. Also with the parade and the cleanup and the street sweeping and, and um the, the, the community appreciates all of your hard work. Does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Hey, next we'll move to the police department.
There's not really anything that's happening regarding anything detailed that I can explain that if you'd like.
Hey, we have listed interstate detail action requested.
Yeah, I, I had received a call from C K and they currently have enough manpower to cover the ninety-one. Apparently, I guess if people are raised about the take place and they may. Question?
So are you saying there's no action needed on that?
We're, well, basically I guess I'm just happy to make sure that you guys don't have an issue with us using our bruisers that when they're saying this detail.
How, how'd that transaction work in the past? Do you remember? They, don't we get paid a certain amount for being there?
This, this company's charging, they're paying sixty dollars.
And we give a portion of that to the officer and we, we keep a portion of that, right? And so I think, what's that number? Do you know?
I think they said they're doing sixty-five.
So, so the officer gets paid fifty-five and we get five dollars an hour for use of our equipment while they're sitting there. We've allowed them to do that in the past.
Which will require a contract, sure.
They have a contract, they're just asking us.
The sub, sub off of their contract, I guess?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll look into that a little bit more, but as long as you guys are okay with that, we'll try to proceed and, and see what else is.
Let's see, why not? Since you've been, you've done it.
We did it with the, the ninety-nine project. It was before me. That's why I'm not real familiar with all the details.
Okay. Okay. Uh, next fire department. Yeah.
Well, we've got for twelve weeks, you have a surgery on his foot, he's going to be out for a little bit. We'll cover it with four-time guys, part-time guys.
Okay.
Is this dates of put? That's what I wanted.
Hey, there's no questions for Chief Saddle. We'll move on to building code and zoning. Okay. Next city attorney report.
City court is, has improved in the, in the sense that we, we've been sending police officers out to baby assist the bring people into at least making appearance as to what they want to do with their traffic ticket or their dog at large ticket or whatever ticket they've, they've received. So that's a, that's a positive, I think, the ordinance you all passed. A year ago now, probably. But anyway, I think we're making progress there. And to everyone and all, all taking a relief off everybody's shoulders. We're not going to do vacation till at least January. We'll get to December on this game.
Can we, we'll go back to that, uh, the court stuff. I think we had a, we were communicating by text last week. We had a situation where possibly some, the municipal court may send someone to jail. Um, didn't happen.
Not, not for the particular violation they got charged with. It's for not making an appearance.
Yeah, and we sustained multiple efforts trying to get them to show up to court. And so I think as far as, and Brian and I've had this conversation, making our court have some teeth where people take it seriously, that this is a real court. You know, we were prepared to first that, put that person in jail if they didn't come to court or respond to the notice. We don't have anything in the budget, I don't think, for, for jail time at this point in time. We didn't anticipate that we'd be this far, I guess, last year when we made our budget. So that's something in the near future we probably want to do is revise our budget to put at least a little bit of fun there. I think it's around fifty dollars a night. And we were talking what, what, I mean, of course it's up to the judge, but Brian, what were you going to recommend?
The max. I mean, the max, the way state code reads, the max you can jail somebody for is thirty days. So, you need to map fifty times thirty is fifteen hundred times ten.
Yeah.
You're looking at a big number. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the the appropriate number is. I'm not the judge. I don't, I can only recommend what what we think a jail time should be between one and thirty.
Yep.
We'll have to.
But I don't think we were, we were looking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if that season around, you all want to go now to spend money housing people in jail. That's totally a policy decision.
Is that all for now, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next city clerk, the, you have that report in your packet too for new licenses. And now city managers report.
I walked back in the building early this morning. I still haven't uh got back on the right time, frame of time or anything of that nature, but um so I don't have a whole lot to offer to you. I do have a, a point there about um administrative assistant, I'll get that in a minute, but first I'll, I'll just start out and saying, I think we had a really busy month this month as far as our, all of our community activities going on. Um, we're super proud of everyone across our organization and, and their participation in those things. Um, I thought the Chris, Christmas parade went really well. Um, probably had something to do with the city manager lining everybody up, you know, I'm getting pretty good at it, but Mike helped me out. Got me in line, but no, it was everybody else, but um, yeah. And Marty up front, yeah, and Mike, Mike was there too. And Marty up front, yeah, and Mike, Mike was there too as well. So just just good all right. It was good fun, I thought. I hope everybody had a good time. I think it's what what makes a community fun.
It was nice to have the streets cleared. Thank you. It was very nice.
Yeah, I keep reminding everyone that.
Mike here.
Mike, Mike, yeah, Mike was there. Yep. So it's just, I I remind everybody when they went and talked to us is that everybody's still getting their bearings. Most, most of our department heads are you know, two or three years into this. And so, you know, we don't do a Christmas parade every day. We do it once a year. So it's it's a it's learning experience. I think we're getting pretty good at it. So I'm proud of the proud of everybody. This month here, you know, we've got truncated by the holidays at the end, but we're going to try to push forward with some initiatives. I continue to work on the annexation component. I drafted out a letter that I shared with the mayor and Brian last week about soliciting people for an annexation meeting. I think it's going to be tight to have that. And I what I'm what I'm moving towards is having a public hearing or a public meeting where people can come and we'll talk to them about annexation in the areas that we're targeting. And maybe even potentially areas that could be annexed in the future or be part of that targeted area if they so choose. And I think the tact that we want to try to strike with those letters is that this is this is informational. This is something we want to get your feedback on whether you want to be in or out, because I think we have that ability. And I keep saying we. You know, this is a little bit different than I think anything we've ever attempted, but if we get down this line, what we're going to then do is probably draw up a boundary of of people we think want to be considered. And then uh circulate that as a petition for people to sign. If we get the threshold of petitions, we'll bring that to council and then council will order an election at some time in the near future to have that election on that annexation question for both the city and the people wanting to come in. And so we want to work with people the best we can to make it something that is positive. It's something that the the gross majority of people who are in that area want to happen. Can't please everyone, we recognize that, but we also want to try to bring some of those people in that we we know we need and we want to try to make that case as well. So that's the tact we're taking. We'll have more to share there. And like I said, I've just been trying to get some initial feedback and working on lists of those targeted properties. I've met with a couple of folks out there who are interested in it. And so that's where I've I've kind of started and we're looking along that Berlin Road corridor. For people around in those areas. So potentially, if this is a model that works, I could see is you know, there's, you know, look at, look at our maps. There's some funky places in the city where you're like, why is that not part of the city? I think we could go to those areas and use this same model to solicit them. Potentially to come in if a gross majority want to come in, we could order an election or try to time that up with one of our regular elections and and hold it. So that's the tact we're taking with that. And so I hope to spend this month trying to get all that stuff in order and have have that first public meeting sometime early January. It's my goal. Any other questions about before I jump in this administrative assistant?
Yes, about the earmarked funding for the riverfront.
Okay.
Project. I think we are a little farther in the process now.
Yeah, I I don't want to jinx it or anything, but we've gotten some good response in the last month from our HUD representative. So it looks like all of our paperwork has been submitted. I think they they're doing some formalities and reviewing that paperwork and should be able to get us a grant agreement here. Looks pretty soon. There's an environmental review component that's going on. Somehow maybe the mayor got ahold of planning, uh, region seven planning. And so they've offered their assistance in helping us with that environmental review and they've done them before. So I I sent them all the documentation today to start working on that. So.
It's not our.
What is the environmental review for?
I think it's a, it's a kind of a standard federal thing where they want to make sure you're not destroying any ecosystems and all that good stuff. And so what we're trying to do is get a categorical exclusion. So we're not, you know, we're not breaking any new ground. This is property. It's already been developed and things that nature. And so what from my understanding is that it should be pretty straightforward. That our project should be able to be categorically excluded from that process.
Because what we're talking about is phase one at the top.
Yeah, the parking lot.
Yeah.
Area. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing to my attention. I put the discussion of the administration assistant under the city manager report because that goes back to that view of what kind of government we have. We've discussed internally between Brian and Joe and myself, and I think we have a need for somebody in our office in some kind of part-time or full-time capacity, depending on the right candidate and things that nature. We'd have in our budget the ability, we've we've budgeted for administrative assistant position. We haven't filled it. And so I'm I'm leaning towards advertising and trying to find a quality candidate to put in there. And I've I've shared some of the thoughts via email with you all. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with those kinds of actions as we move forward. If you, if you're, you know, if you've got a concern about it, I'd love to hear hear about it, but I think for the general public, I, you know, I've had some feedback. Well, you guys are adding all these administrative positions. We have the positions in the budget because we've had two people leave in the last year for different reasons and we haven't filled those positions in our in our city organization. And so I think from a city government standpoint, yeah, we have a lot of faces up here, but we probably have as as many or as few employees that we've had in, you know, recent history at the city building. So like I said, this position, I'm trying to gear towards more of a person that can help out with some administrative stuff, but also there's a couple of grants that I'm targeting this year with community, community block grant that I really want to apply for, targeting sidewalks. Then we've always got that round of transportation alternatives I think that we could work on. And then there's some other programs also I'd like to try to lean into and and see if we can have somebody help us write with those. Joe and I discussed today also even the possibility of someone helping out with municipal fees, I think. You know, with the sanitary board merger and things of that nature, we're going to have some 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 help and some capacity there, but you know, we still kind of have the gut feeling that we need a little bit of assistance there as we move forward with all the other tasks that we're doing. So open any feedback.
I believe you could almost have a full-time position for grant writing.
But I think that's kind of my intention. I mean, long, long term is I'd like to sell it to something where we've always traditionally taken the approach that when we write a grant, we're going to use a hundred percent of the funds for getting stuff, you know, whether it's capital works or whatever, but typically in this grant writing world, you write part of your administrative costs into the grant. And so I I'd like to find somebody that could do that and help kind of pay for some of these programs. And I think community block development grants and things of that nature are are things that are on a cyclical basis. And so conceivably, we if we could get that precedent started, maybe we could fund at least a little bit of the position or a good portion of it with with those grants themselves.
Thought Laura was going to help out with a lot of administrative.
Well, she she is and she's, I mean, as a reminder, she's completely grant funded right now. But she has her goals through the AmeriCorps program, so she's got to spend this year developing that program and and I think her her focus is going to be more parks and recreation oriented. And so this isn't necessarily those those topics that we're talking about. So I'm looking for someone that can work more towards community development aims. Plus help us with.
We've been successful in getting grants. But we've had to rely largely on volunteers to go out and make application and do the reporting. And it would be nice if we had the funding to have a staff person who's designated and responsible for meeting those deadlines.
Yeah, I think.
And reporting to council.
My intention with the position is to to advertise it as a temporary thing, maybe six to twelve months. And and see how it goes with that position and see who who we're able to drum up and you, when you advertise that way, you probably don't get a good great candidate because of that temporary nature. But I'd also don't, you know, this is this is something I think could grow into something, but I also don't necessarily think that maybe it's our priority long term to have that position filled. Unless it's something that's really generated a lot of value in that amount of time. But it's difficult to 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 manage everything. And I think that that's that's what we're seeing is that there's a lot of holes there that just sit there because we don't have anybody to kind of pick up those small tasks and get those things done as we're working on.
My only concern is snow plowing. You know, and we only have so much money for employees.
Yeah.
And we we have a wonderful mechanic now that you guys have have told us about and which is saving, excuse me, saving us a lot of money. On equipment and such throughout every department, but so that that would be my concern is I know we've lost what two people in the street department?
Well, temporary.
The temporaries, yeah, the temporaries. And I was just wondering about a temporary. If we could have two temporaries instead of just one office temporary.
Sorry.
Okay, okay. I know we only have so much money for employees.
Well, we have each each department has its own budget.
Right.
And so I think the street department has the street department budget. Now, we could take from a department and move money over to the street department if we wanted to. Not saying you can't do that, but I think the the position I'm talking about is money we've already designated within another department, which is the finance.
I understand that. And law enforcement too. Well, that's another.
Yeah, and they have their their funds as well that we've designated for.
But in the whole scheme of things, in the big pot, there's only so much to do through all of the departments. That's what I'm saying and and that would be my concern.
I mean, it goes back to when you decide your budget, when you decide your priorities, I guess is.
I know.
You've got to determine.
Right.
Yep.
So if you have any additional thoughts about the position, please reach out to Nate and offer your feedback. So he'll know how to proceed.
Well, I think I'm going to proceed, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, but I'm, you know, it's not a done deal. And if if you guys have any other thoughts about it, and it's the first time I've really presented it to you, I'll I'll welcome that and, you know, we're not locked into it until we give somebody the okay to take the position. So I think we'll, you know, we've got to find someone one and get them to agree to all the terms and all that good stuff too. So.
So you don't need council approval to.
I don't think so, because I think the position's already been created and we have the budgeted funds for it. That's my reading of how it works.
And it's a temporary position and no insurance.
No, I think we try to, well, it depends. If they're part-time up to twenty hours, we wouldn't give them any any benefits.
Benefits.
But if we made them a forty-hour employee, they would have.
As a part-time?
Well, it would be temporary. And part-time is how many hours a week you work. Temporary is the duration of how you're going to work, right?
Understand. I understand.
So you, yeah, and potentially if we sit there and said, we may, you know, we may look at it and say we're going to hire you for forty hours a week, but if it's only six months and that doesn't cross that a thousand twenty-four hour, thousand forty-hour threshold, then we will not do, you know, we won't provide benefits.
Because that's where you're going to run into the money.
Yeah.
Hey, do you have anything else, Nate?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve all of the department reports, including the check, check detail dated twelve four twenty-three.
I'm going to approve all department reports, including.
Check detail.
Check detail.
They did twelve four.
They did twelve four twenty-three.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen. City of Weston prohibiting parking on portions of West Seventh Street. This would be the second reading.
Did we, were we able to make contact with the owner this past week and?
I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
Okay.
I think the concern was can you can you restrict handicap parking or disabled parking? And the reading of of portions of the of West Virginia code allows us to have plenary power in regulating our streets. And then plenary means wide encompassing, all ranging. And the relevant portion of the the ADA indicates that you can't discriminate based on disability. But when you, when you're, when you're providing safe, what's the word I'm looking for? Safe dispersal of your services, you can, you can in in this situation, you can make everybody park on one side of the street. And and it's not discriminatory because your 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 public service, your safety purpose is not to discriminate, it's to is to provide your services equally and and efficiently to everybody on that street.
I agree, but I think we left it with the homeowner that we're going to try to reach out to him to see if we could work out a better arrangement than than what we did. And I don't think we've made that contact.
So we need to table.
Please do. Yep.
Okay.
Indefinite. If you want to table, if you want to table it indefinitely.
Put that back.
Yeah, sorry.
And deal with it. Indefinitely.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. Amend the September fifth, two thousand and six feline control ordinance by adding in registration process and registration fees.
You know, I think we were, last time we were looking for a registration number and a re-registration number as far as the payment goes and I think we we set it on five dollars for a registration and two fifty for a re-registration.
Okay.
So that's that's all that got added to it.
And this would be the first reading. Okay. Is there a motion to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two by title only?
I'll move to have the first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Okay, is there a second?
By title only. Pardon? By title only.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two and ordinance to amend the September fifth two thousand and six feline control ordinance by adding in registration process and registration fees. First reading by title only.
Yeah, we entertain a motion to accept or reject the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two by title only.
I'm going to accept first reading wasn't twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two by title. I'll say.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen White?
Yes.
Councilman Kirk Curtis?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. Next, reallocation of Weston Sanitary Board ARPA funds for additional bills.
That's cleaning up a past issue where we allocated some funds with a list and then a certain dollar. And the sanitary board was able, well, through the need to pay those bills, end up paying some of the some portion of those bills with their own funds. And so we had some leftover funds at the end. And then there was also a question of our machinery. Were we willing to pay off the the machinery lease to get out from under that with the interest and things that was being generated. And so my recommendation to you is to allow them to use the remain remainder of those funds for any outstanding bills they have. But also authorize them to pay off that lease for the machinery. And I think that will be the end of those funds that we've allocated.
We already allocated those funds to them.
Yeah.
And this is what they had left over. How much is it?
Do you have that number off the top of your head? Yeah. I think we were talking about fifteen thousand. Well, I think just under thirty thousand dollars of bills that could, yeah. And of that twenty-eight thousand, there was roughly, there's fifteen thousand on the lease for the machine. So we just wanted to be kosher with the authorization given to make sure that they're authorized to to pay off some other bills and then take care of that machinery lease.
Do you have a total dollar amount that you're talking about?
Well, no, but I think the money's already been authorized. You we've cut the check to sanitary board.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that the sanitary board, if they use those funds to pay for anything else, wouldn't be in violation of the authorization you gave them when you gave those funds to them. That makes any sense.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Much longer was at least.
I think we had almost a year left. And at this point, we had passed the the threshold for paying it in twelve months. And so we were paying thirty-five percent. Thirty-five percent of our premium that we were paying was going towards interest. Or, you know, the the equipment dealer was keeping it and sixty-five percent of that was going towards the premium. So potentially we could save around eight thousand dollars by paying it off early, if I remember my numbers right. Yeah.
I was getting ready to ask next if there's an option to buy or.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're going to do.
To pay off the lease.
Yeah. And they were kind enough to offer. And they were kind enough to offer us that option where our rear payments that we hadn't made in four or five months, instead of making us pay those, then buy off, they're gonna allow us just to pay it off and be done with it. Yeah.
So entertain a motion to allow the sanitary board to use the remaining ARPA funds for additional bills and to pay off the lease for their machinery.
I'll move to approve.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? We are voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Steve White?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, police take home vehicle policy.
All right, do you all have a copy of that in your packet? I think that that make.
Does that say administrative requirements? Is that what that is?
Yeah, page twenty, it's got twenty-four on the bottom and a forty-three on the bottom, but it should be right after. We had, we had two questions when it came to this police cruiser, I think that was brought up. One, what were we asking for? Then two, could we even offer the cruiser as a benefit to take home? And I think what Joe has provided you through the IRS says that if our officers are essentially on call, then they are allowed to take home their vehicle. And from our policy and from other other policies, they are on-call officers. It doesn't mean they're getting paid for now. Was the second question, right? Is naturally, do they get paid while they're on call? And no, they do not, even though we do have a special category, what we call night calls, where we, we make that officer be available to to respond. They're responsible to respond. And so since they're, they are responsible to respond immediately, we do pay them for that, for that time at a reduced rate. Uh, but otherwise, officers generally can be called into duty at any time. And so that's why their vehicle is allowed to be ta- taken in their on-call. But they're not, there's a word I'm looking for. What's the word, Joe? That the IRS used?
So the the Department of Labor used to term where if they can adequately use their their time off for um private focus.
Yeah.
Draws the line between if they have to be paid for that on-call time or unpaid on-call time.
Yeah.
Basically, can you go to the moving theater? Uh, if if we're telling you that you you have to be ready at the drop of a hat, then you have to pay. But the Department of Labor says you can still be on-call and not be paid as long as you're allowed to use your private time.
Privately.
Privately.
Yeah. So that's the the difference we're making there.
So the moral of the story is they can take their vehicles.
They can. And then I think, yep, and then it becomes the question of our policy, how how lo- how far away are we gonna let them take the vehicle? Our current policy allows twenty nautical miles. Um, nautical, I think, meaning the radius from our office to to there. We currently have an officer that's forty-six miles by driving and I think thirty-nine by driving.
Um, however, there is a policy that Chief Thomas said, a hardship policy, where if the department is experiencing a hardship, which I think our our department is all the time, experiencing because somebody's out or somebody's gone or we're trying to replace someone. So that clause covers us.
And we have that, but we've, but we've required those who live outside that twenty mile nautical distance to pay a portion of their paycheck back based on the IRS reimbursement mileage. We have been, yeah. And so those officers have willingly done it. They know that they've known the rules. But they've come to us recently with all the pressures of wages and stuff like that and said, listen, if you guys would be able to read renegotiate that, we would appreciate that and consider that enough of a wage to keep us happy at this point in time.
Okay.
Um, so what we're kind of, we're thinking the policy, instead of being twenty nautical miles, we'd just like to make it fifty miles driving distance. Um, and then that would allow us to allow those officers to take their vehicle home and still be able to respond.
Okay. What are you looking for us for tonight?
Um, I guess just approval or revision of the police policy four-one-one to that members will reside within fifty driving miles of the West Weston Police Department.
Well, set like that too, Sherry.
I'm have to approve a revision of policy four-one-one to allow police vehicles to be driven fifty miles?
Members to reside within fifty miles.
First to reside within fifty miles, sorry.
Fifty driving miles, sir.
Okay.
That was a mouthful.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll say.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Request to send letter to DOH requesting downtown traffic study assistance. You have that letter in your packet?
Um. Let's see, I had a question. Don't remember seeing where we included Court Avenue in that traffic study. Do you think it does? To um encompass Mr. Shock?
I said this down in, this downtown area would roughly encompass from the entrance exit area to Kinstonville, Narrows, Central Center, Main and portions of Court to the Fourth and Third Street intersections. But we could include Court and Sixth Avenue or Sixth Street, I should say, which I think is what we're talking about by Bob Bob's Auto. And that that effect, which I have no problem adding to the letter.
Okay.
Since the DOH conversation was initially to close that current Fourth Street Bridge, and now maybe it's not. I, can we get a clarification or request one within this same letter to um that would give us a bit more knowledge of the um, the current bridge structure and what it would take for it to be accessible? Because I I'm pretty certain that DOH said that that bridge would be of top concern.
We just received some bridge inspections. Was that not one of them? I thought it was.
It may have been one. I have to look back and see.
We really need to know since, I mean, that will be on the city to to make those repairs, correct?
Yeah, or demolish the bridge or anything like that.
Yeah, so in order to give everybody a correct answer, I think we need to know what it's gonna cost and how soon we're gonna be required to do it, if you don't mind to include that.
Yeah, I I'm I'm just forecasting. Maybe we should turn the tape offs. My guess is the DOH is gonna say it's your bridge, it's just kinda your problem, you know, hire an engineer to do that, but I'll put it in the letter.
But if we have an inspection, we.
And I think they do those inspections for their general off-road bridge program, just as a courtesy to a municipality. But I think any further analysis, they're going to point back to us and say, that's your responsibility, it's your bridge. But we'll try.
It'd just be nice to have a clear answer.
Yeah.
If we can get one.
Well, we got one on the lights on the bridge, didn't we?
Yeah, we sure did. Okay, is there a motion to to uh make the revisions to the DOH letter and send that?
Yes, I'll move to send the DOH letter upon revisions that we made tonight.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Police pay scale.
Um, do you all know we were working to um bump our pay up because we had one officer that was potentially looking at a different department had had a substantial raise offered to them? It sounds like from the conversation today that that officer may be leaving already and accepted other employment. Um, so I'm gonna ask for you to table this discussion. And I think right now, um, I'm hoping to revisit it this month with you all. And I think we've got a couple of things that may end up being special session material throughout the month, and we'll just try to bring it up then, I think. But um, like I said, the the situation became fluid when I walked back at the door this morning with with that news. Um, but I think our intention, I'll give you a little bit of update on the stuff we've done. Our intention is to try to get our our starting officer paid and match the Lewis County Sheriff's Department the best we can, at least, you know, comparable to that. Um, and our current existing budget with six officers, that was a challenge. We just we couldn't probably fi- overcome the overtime, you know? If we're gonna fund those raises, we're gonna take them from overtime and maybe some equipment costs that we built in. And we just, with the equipment costs we've already incurred this year and our projected overtime with what we've seen so far, we were gonna struggle to do that. Um, so I think, don't quote me on, we we put the spreadsheet out and we kinda messed with some numbers, but we were looking probably for another twenty thousand dollars somewhere else, which, and we have some contingency money budgeted. We always had the rainy day fund that we've tried to not touch, but it's there. But like I said, this may not even come to fruition with with the events of today. So we'll get back to you on that. So actually, table that discussion.
Do I have a motion to table?
I have to table.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Employee year-end incentives.
Our annual tradition here of of trying to um provide an incentive to uh city workers, I guess, for their year-end contributions. Um, in the past, we've always offered two hundred and fifty dollars for full-time. And I think last year we offered a hundred and twenty-five for part-time uh workers. That was a a net number, and I think my recommendation, if you so choose, is not to net it, but to to actually just make that a gross number that would be paid out as retroactive pay uh for the past year to employees um for for their work uh through the Christmas holiday and things and parade and of that nature, if you so choose. Um, so I'll let you decide what you'd like to do.
Why'd you decide gross instead of net now?
Well, I think the, you know, last year we kinda chucked because it was gonna be a difficult thing for us to parse out because every employee has different tax parameters, right? With 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 their withhold withholdings. And I think the more I thought about it, I just think it's it's grossly unfair to any and unfair to one, our payroll person, because it's it's a monumental task. But then two, you largely choose your withholding parameters when you sign up. And so we, you know, we're not privy to your tax returns or anything of that nature. And so when we sit there and say, you know, we're going to net out for you to get two hundred and fifty dollars, you may pay that all to Uncle Sam, you know, because we're gonna pay an additional portion to get out of that. Or, you know, you may not pay it to Uncle Sammy, maybe they're withholding a lot of, a lot of cash and it ends up coming back to you in the form of a refund. Um, so I just think for the, for intensive fairness across the board, everybody gets a gross amount of this amount and your tax situation is your tax situation, just like it is with your regular salary. And it's gonna be treated as regular salary. Understood the thought, you know, but it's just, I think it's just more prob- more problems than it's worth, honestly.
So what's your number, magic number?
I think it's completely up to you all. I'm an employee, so I shouldn't have really anything to do with it, but.
Well, he said last year was two hundred fifty for full-time and one twenty-five for part-time.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve that.
I'll say.
Okay, it's been, uh, a motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Funding request for joint Lewis Upsher Randolph Wellness Campaign.
Slide down the mic. So this is kind of a joint venture with Lewis Upsher and Randolph County, the Fire Chief from Buchanan's approached us and we're trying to get a program started for mental health and wellness for all first responders, not just the fire service. Because if somebody reaches out to us right now, there really is no program to help help anybody. So we're just trying to get a good program started. And Sherry sitting on the conference call with the county's gonna pitch in some we're just trying to get to the city to match what Upsher County and Randolph County did a five green. And then the counties, Upsher Randolph and Lewis County, so pretty much said they're gonna give eighteen thousand for the program. So I really don't need this until next budget season because this five thousand is gonna be for the maintenance side of it.
Yeah.
For continuing of it.
So you're as, I thought they they were asking cities specifically for about a five thousand. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It's it's gonna be a next budget season, so I've got a little bit of time to
Okay.
To make you guys aware of it, so we really don't have to take action on it.
Okay.
But it is a program we're working on. We've got a meeting tomorrow, so we got a group from New Jersey coming down. Somebody says they have a problem now, three o'clock in the morning, we'll have people that's man and ready to take care of the problem.
And this, this is for the the first responders to use on people they find out on the street or on your, on your own self. Right? And so, I mean, I think there's a lot of, lot of and and I'm gonna, when I start speaking out of turn, tell me, a lot of mental stress in being first responders and seeing the stuff they see and having to go home with that. And and this, this is, I mean, that's kinda what I wanted to put my piece in.
What do you think about it?
Uh, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing, to be honest with you. I mean, any, any help you can give these guys and girls is is I think well worth it. They're they're the, we don't see what they see, to be honest with you, and we don't know how to handle that. We don't, we don't know how to, how you deal with something like that. And we know, we, I'm sorry.
City manager, is it your recommendation for us to go ahead and approve a match of five thousand or to table?
If we, if we don't have to cut the check till next year, what I would do is make a motion to have the city manager include that in the preparations for the FY twenty-five budget. And that way, when I forget, it's not your fault, it's my fault. Okay. But yeah, the 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 piggyback on Brian, currently, the resource for these guys is they call a local pastor to receive counseling. And I think this, this is something we we should as an entity offer to our employees in some form or fashion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to. Five thousand dollars.
For this, for the city manager to include in the upcoming
FY twenty-five budget.
FY twenty-five budget.
Twenty-five budget.
Thank you. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Revocation and awarding of twenty-four seven environmental bids to Aster Oilfield Services.
We'll start with the legal side of it. We're worried the, a bid to twenty-four seven to tear down some buildings. Now, I forget the addresses off the top of my head, but there was um, an extreme breakdown in communication between them and us. They wouldn't take phone calls or we couldn't find them or whatnot. But ultimately, twenty-four, we got ahold of twenty-four seven and twenty-four seven indicated that it was swampless stuff, having other ancillary type issues and wasn't gonna be able to to do its demolitions in the time allocated in the contract. So they lack of a better word, they rescinded their contractor or don't wanna, don't want us to be held up by them not being able to to do it. And so we got the, we got indication from their owner that that they're withdrawing from the contractor, rescinding the contractor or whatnot. Which leads us to giving the bid to somebody else.
When we, when we did this round of bids, the next lowest bidder in that uh for those three addresses was Aster Oilfields, who had the other four out of those seven. And actually, before we could get ahold of twenty-four seven environmental, I had talked with Aster Oilfields and said they were more than capable of adding those three, if we so choose um, to to award them to. They are supposed to move into town this week to to do the other four. They, and if we award them, they would like to try and get all seven at once.
That's nice.
So I, that way, hopefully, we can get them all done before the end of the year and cleaned up.
Thank you, Marty.
Can you give us a address, Marty?
Yeah, uh, three oh one Wright Street, sixty-five Alum Avenue and sixty-seven Alum Avenue. The total difference between the two bids is uh twelve hundred and seventy-one dollars. So they were, they were very close.
With the job that Aster does, though.
I'm, I'm.
Top notch, I mean.
I'm happy with them so far.
I think we all are.
Yeah, they, they've been a little bit delayed themselves because they had three employees with COVID last week.
Oh, my.
And I know what that's like because I had it at the beginning. And I know what that's like because I had it at the beginning of February.
Do we have a written withdrawal from twenty-four seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Of course, Brian has one.
And nowadays, I I I guess technically on paper, it's an email signature.
Sure.
From the guy's email saying. Saying.
It works.
Withdrawal is from this, so we reset.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal of twenty-four seven environmental. And award the bids. On three oh one Wright, sixty-five Alum and sixty-seven Alum to Aster Oilfield Services. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rother?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephen White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. Request to purchase asphalt zipper machine from General Fund.
I I'd written you guys kind of an email background on that. I guess I'll just rehash that a little bit. Yeah, we've, we've had a couple of projects pop up here where. The road has been in such bad condition that. It needs, well, what I would call is a reclaim re- reclamation process, which is basically a big rotor tiller that comes in and tilts up the road. Allows us to then roll it out, grade it out, and then pour pavement back on top of it. This company, I have experience with them in Vermont, at least using the equipment. I don't have any personal experience, but I mean, see, just. Personal on the job site, seeing seeing the piece of equipment, it hooks to the front of your backhoe. And has a big rotor tiller on it and you can set it at different depths where you can reclaim, like I was talking about, or you can mill. So if we had an area where we had too much asphalt, we could take it down. It's got a four foot width on the on the blade, so. You know, when we when we hire out the the milling services through pavement, it's it's oftentimes, I think it's more of an eight foot or six to eight foot. Wide width. It's got a conveyor belt that can shoot it into a truck. This doesn't have any of those kinds of features. It has the model we're looking at, has a water tank. But allows us to do some of that work in-house. Now, we're a small municipality. I'm not quite sure. You know, projection wise, how much, you know, how much milling our machine would would do, you know, in in the past, we've spent. When we, when we do the paving works, that machine costs in addition to the pavement, to have them come in and mill it. And so. I think our first year, we spent around fifty thousand dollars just on the milling machine work itself. And then this year, we didn't spend quite as much because we cheated, and I say cheated, but we we tried to work with the existing structure to kind of keep those costs a little bit lower. But eventually, at some point, somebody's got to mill those roads down because we've added too much asphalt over the years. So this machine is not something, you know, it's not critical necessarily to the operation, but it'd be a nice piece of equipment, I think, for us to have. I'm not convinced maybe that it's necessarily for our context. We wanted to kind of see a demonstration of it. And see how it would do on some of our hills and things of that nature, because those are the roads like Menden and Loftus, there are two that we're looking at that are just. You know, beyond repair. It's either dig them out or, you know, grind them up in some capacity and try to start over. So I contacted this company, to make a long story short. Contacted the company, they've got a special promotion, they must have their best salesman on the line and said, you know, they're going to take a big price increase. By the end of the year, and if we could get approval by the end of the year, then we could conceivably save, you know, forty to fifty thousand dollars on our purchase. They also have a a municipal lease arrangement, which I don't, I do not know the details of at this point in time. But that would allow us to have six payments over six years. Uh, our first payment wouldn't be due until next year, twelve months from when we received the piece of equipment. So that allows, you know, it's not currently in our budget, we could build that into the budget as we move forward. So I think all those boxes need to be explored a little bit more, but they kind of check off the 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 quick turnaround parameters. My question, I guess, for for the council is, is this kind of purchase something we're willing to entertain? If not, or even, you know, strongly consider, if not, then I won't move forward anymore. And like I said, it's not any kind of. Yeah, I will be upset or anything of that nature. It's a nice to have, not necessarily a need to have. The only, the only piece of equipment I could find in our area comparable, J F Allen had, and it was a mobilization fee of five thousand dollars. Just to get the machine to show up. So. Yeah, like I said, it's a difficult proposition. It's not the, not necessarily what I want to be. You know, locking myself into in the sense, but I do think that there's places where this machinery would would really help us. We think we could probably use it on alleyways, you know, some of our gravelled alleyways that have rutted out, we bring that machine down the alleyway. Till it up and then then roll it back out, the flat nose out and not make them so ruddy and things of that nature. So at this point, I just want your consideration, I guess, on the price. Are we, is that something we'd be willing to consider to build into our budget? If yes, then I think we would look to drag with this company here in the next couple of weeks to see if this machine actually fits our context before coming back to you. Uh, for final approval, or, you know, it's just something where you're like, yeah, Nate, it's nice to have, but we'd rather prioritize other other things, which is, I think, a fair answer. So just throwing that counsel for your consideration.
I'd like to prioritize other things.
That's.
I got, to be honest with you, sticker shock.
Yep, that's fine. Yeah, no, no worries.
Yeah.
I think it's nice to have machines to get the work done.
Yep.
Just knew to been around them so long. They're a big help as far as, especially in emergency cases, you know.
Ethan?
Well, that sounds good, but uh, those funds could be used elsewhere.
I think that's my answer, right? Good one. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
A request to purchase curving machine from Stormwater Fund.
We're not as far along along as this as I hoped we would be. Um, I think we're, this was, we'd had a conversation about this previously, I was going to come back to you and we're going to try to to see the machinery in action. We've been trying to chase down one in action. I think our latest, we're looking at early January, to hopefully take a trip to to Nashville to see it in operation. I really want our, you know, the guys that lead our street department to see this thing in action because it it is labor intensive the day you use it. But it saves a lot of labor long-term, but it's got to be something, if we're going to purchase it, I think we've got to commit to be able to do the process. Which involves some up and downs and concrete work that we're probably not used to doing. I think we're capable of doing, but not used to doing, so. At this point, you've seen the price here. I wanted to get this quote out in front of you. We'd be looking for the twenty-one horsepower option because it's got some self-propulsion. I think that, you know, the the fun spent on that would be very beneficial, but I'll table this until we get get, or I request a table, I guess, until. Um, we get further indication, we want to take that direction.
Yeah, we entertain a motion to table.
I think we can do.
I'll move to table. That number didn't give me heart palpitations like the other one did.
Second. Hey, it's been moved in second to table the request to purchase the curving machine. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. My agenda drops off after that. I guess we're ready for council report. Okay. You have my report. I handed that out prior to the meeting. And there's two things I want to mention and they're both tomorrow. Uh, at eleven AM, Jay, uh, from. Downtown Design is going to do a Zoom call with us. To go over the survey. The next leg of, or the next phase. Of the Hubcap Community Program is business redevelopment, so. We're we're starting into that and if anybody can be on that Zoom call at eleven, that would be great.
This isn't the the final end-all-be-all conversation about that survey, just the preliminary finding. And then I think our intention there, right, we discussed the last Hubcap, it was sometime in early January, and you may even remember that date. That we were going to kind of have a town meeting to reveal that and talk to Jay and take taking feedback.
Also, we submitted an application to be an on-track community and. They're having a preliminary meeting with us at one PM tomorrow at the city building. And we've invited the Chamber of Commerce, the Lewis County EDA, the county commissioners. And if any of you can make that meeting, it would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have. Councilwoman Rogers?
One o'clock. I'd like to thank everyone in our community for. And for attending, first of all, for attending tonight, especially our youth, that was wonderful. But also our team, how welcoming everyone is and and courteous and considerate of the public. Not just in these meetings, but every day. And I also want to thank you for waking up every single day of your lives and making our community a better place. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Stephen?
My family and I loved the Christmas parade. That was, that was awesome. My son loves fire trucks, so there was plenty of them. So I really appreciated that. Everything looked great. The city looked absolutely stunning for what it is and. Um, I really appreciate all the work, especially um. The the police department with the moving the sign on on North River. Uh, unfortunately, people still think it's a drag strip to see how fast they can go, but thankfully, I know that you will move in on those. Coming up soon. Um, I do appreciate everybody and all their hard work each and every day. Um, and hopefully we can continue to make West in a better place, so.
Okay, thank you.
For for Herb Gibson, can I, Debbie asked me, she sent an email like earlier today, or I guess the end of the day, and she wanted to.
Thank the street department for all her help during Miracle Maine and uh, their help was greatly noted. And she also wanted to thank the city clerk, fire department, police department for all her help with the Christmas parade. And she thought it was a fantastic parade and many people noticed and were appreciative of the cars being removed. And then she had some other to-dos that I'll leave off.
Don't read the rest of her. I gotta have.
So I want to pass those comments along to those of.
I'd just like to say and and thank everyone as well for their involvement in the recent projects and. Especially the parade as well. I think they said the parade lasted an hour and ten minutes or so. And to have that many people that want to be involved. Uh, within a a city activity and then for all the people from Fourth Clearup Maine that was involved. Uh, patrons and the community and people on the sides of the street, it was just, it was full the whole way, so. It's a good sign or it's a inkling of a of a positive anyway to going in a in a positive, better direction for us. And I think it speaks volumes of where we was and and where we're at now, so. And with everybody's issues, everybody's hard work and the outcome of that, so. And that's all I have. That I move to adjourn.